Okay, good evening folks. I'd like to stop the planning board meeting for a moment. Okay. Okay, it's 30 West Street at the library, scheduled hearing. 6:30, open public meeting for site plan application for 68, 70, and 72 Pleasant Street, map 14, Placels 9, 3, and 3A, multifamily residential above floors with office on the first floor. Open the public hearing for special permit. Okay. For use of 68, 70, and 71 Pleasant Street, map 14, Placels 9, 23, and 3A, multifamily residential above floors, floors on the first floor. You gotta wait a minute, something on the other. Okay, you can get started gentlemen. Okay.
For the way here, Chris Anderson with Hany Engineering here on behalf of Pleasant Pleasant Square Apartments LLC for the construction of a multifamily structure with a small office component at 70 and 72 Pleasant Street. Just to orientate ourselves here, we have Pleasant Street, different ones along the side, a page. You have Boyle Place, that one's along the top, and if you were to go effectively off page to the top, it's the center of town. Currently, the property contains two commercial structures which at this point in time have been pretty much abandoned, left in its current state. It is noted that there are several proceedsments to the benefit of both these two properties as well as 68 Pleasant Street, which is owned by the Silas family. But it's the general intent of the project to demolish the existing commercial structures on the property and in its place to construct a new multifamily structure. As part of that, there will be a total of 21 residential units on the property with a little bit more than 2,000 square foot office devoted to it. Access will be provided off of Pleasant Street by a new paved driveway which will extend effectively the entire length of the site itself, and will provide parking off of that driveway. As part of it, based on zoning requirements of the combined usage, we need a total of 35 parking spots. We're showing 36. In addition to that, two additional spaces dedicated exclusively for the 68 Pleasant Street property, so complying compliance with lots of parking requirements.
I'll open up the other hearing. Open public meeting, a public hearing for a special permit, the floodplain for 68, 70, and 72 Pleasant Street, map 14, Placels 19, 3, and 3A, multifamily residential above floors with office on the first floor. Okay.
And we'll lead into that. The design of the site is pretty unique in that there is extensive environmental components to the site in general. The site is bordered by the new sidewalk, there was a lot of back porch of the site, so there is the corresponding.
Yes Dean?
No, we have corn.
Okay, Dean, you're off the hook.
No, we have corn.
We have a form Dean. Okay. Thank you. Have a Dean Day, eh?
So, as I was saying, we have a new sidewalk, there was along the rear portion of the site. With that, it has its corresponding rear, front, and border vegetated wetlands impacts. So we will be following with the conservation at some point in time. But one of the major components of this is the border land subs and flooding, the floodplain is off the property. So under the current theme of firm panels and mapping programs, the current flood elevation in this area sits at around 402, which effectively is about two feet above existing grade of that of Pleasant Street. So effectively it renders the entire property within the floodplain. At this point in time, FEMA is currently reevaluating all their flood mapping programs within this general watershed. And effectively what that does is they're changing the floodplain elevations, and based on the proposed floodplain, it's turned down to about elevation 398, so it kind of bisects the entire property itself, bringing the majority of the site back out of the floodplain. But because of that floodplain issue, we have to balance the site in order to ensure that we're not filling the floodplain and that we're providing the appropriate amount of compensation. Because of that issue, what we've done is effectively elevated the second and third and fourth floors of the structure to be effectively it's higher above everything. The driveway for the site will actually extend down into the building where it'll be supported by pedestals, and then residential building on top of that. The first floor will be located above the front elevation, and that will be accessed via the new sidewalk system on the northern portion of the building. So that effectively brings the entire living space of the building outside of the floodplain. And in order to provide additional compensation, the entire ground level, if you will, of the building that's first floor will be also elevated by peers in order to create additional compensation underneath the building so that it has full compliance with floodplain management. In addition to that, it does help again with the stormwater management, which I'll get into in a moment. But effectively what we're doing is we're building it on top and elevating as much as possible to get it outside the floodplain for the actual structure itself. Relative to stormwater, it's the intent to capture majority of the site and direct it towards an infiltration system from the front portion of the site. We've done soil testing with TPW, and have gone through that process, so we've done their initial review. But like I said before, because everything's kind of built up, a lot of the sites imperious is located under the structure, so it's a generally cleaner runoff, which is not directly runoff onto the pavement. But everything is directed towards the infiltration system for mitigation, and then discharge is towards the rear portion of the property. This will also be reviewed with conservation if you file with them. Also, everything else, the site will be loaned and ceded upon the completion of construction. And that would be the general intent for the project. If there's any questions, it's all handled.
What's the C word? What were your proposal on that first floor?
So that'll be approximately 2,0323 square feet of office space, which will be dedicated pretty much to the rental company and the real estate agent that's going to occupy and operate the building itself. So moderately low impact office space component to it. That'll be one component, and then there would be an AD accessible unit as well on the first floor. And then from there, there's a stair system, there's an elevator that brings you up to the second floor, which has a townhouse style apartment configuration to fit the additional units.
Can I ask you some questions, Charlie? Have you reviewed the department, had comments?
Yes, we did. We haven't formally responded to them. We wanted to come before the board. We do acknowledge this is a very intensive project for Hany Engineering, so we wanted to get initial feedback from the board, at which point we can then incorporate any comments or concerns with department and planning comments.
Do you want to at least speak to some of them so we can have a sense of where we're at?
Absolutely.
Did John, did I miss it? Did he open the?
Yes. Yeah, he opened up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we'll go through each one of them. So the first one I see is the Board of Health. Demolition of existing commercial structure will need demolition permits. Mixed-use buildings require private rubbish collection. If choosing a dumpster owner will need a concrete slab.
So let's acknowledge and aware that we will be needing all the applicable demo permits and stuff like that for the demolition phase. We are showing a proposed dumpster towards the rear portion of the site. That'll be on a concrete pad, closed with a vinyl fence, a little off dumpster because of the type of configuration of the site. So we are accounting for that as part of our.
Next one I see is fire. Sprinkler plans and calculations under the CMRs, and then fire alarm plans under the CMRs, that's all it says.
Yep, so that's general building permit level construction documents that will be provided for the fire department.
And the next I see is police department. If an alarm is used, the owner and manager should contact, owner and manager contact information should be provided to the police department and kept updated.
Again, that's more of a construction or a final level construction document that we need authority with the police department with.
And conservation, although the proposal goes to, and you touched upon this, but although the proposal goes to great lengths to compensate flood storage through elevated construction and underground storage, questions about new floodplain elevations and potential impacts on first floor residential will be discussed in future, notice intent to the comment.
Yep, we acknowledge that we are definitely in front of the conservation question, so that is one.
All right, Building Inspector approves with no comments. TPW approves with the comment that the access turning radii for the fire department vehicles should be reviewed. The Department of Public Works recommends that the applicant meet with the fire department to discuss.
So to speak on that, we did review internally the turning maneuvers to get in and out of the site, there's plenty of space. As part of our recent middle of documents to the board, we're going to provide turning radii for accommodation truck as well as a ladder truck that can get in and out of the site. So that, the site has been designed to accommodate that, but we'll provide the additional information.
And the assessor's office approves, saying it's better use of the property, and there's a need for residential units. As the property stands today, needs revitalization, although I find the design to be rather sterile, it will improve the property value. Mixed-use property is in high demand in today's real estate market. Purposeful landscaping will improve the site. And then yours, Elizabeth, do you want to give your?
Sure. I have a lot of comments, so I'll just start beginning. There are two waivers that were requested. One was from section 22, 62.3.1 regarding no landscape plan being prepared by an licensed landscape architect. The second waiver was section 22, 52.2.3, a waiver being requested from a, providing a three-foot clearance from a column to a maneuvering aisle or parking space. And then, under site plan, there was a site plan, and then there's two special permits, so I'll start with site plan. The parking was adequate, this says storage is adequate. The dumpster needs to be screened using planting fences, masonry, or natural material. There were a couple of plan notes, just general, please indicate that the property is within the downtown overlay district, and also indicate in the plan the property is in the floodplain overlay district. And the applicant's cover memo stated there was going to be 20 units, but the plan said there's going to be 19 units, so clarify which is which. Indicate the width of the sidewalks. On all sidewalks proposed on the plan, they have to be at least five feet width. You have to meet the lighting requirements. Wetlands, the development shall preserve sensitive environmental features such as wetlands. Applicant should work with the conservation commission to experience has been done. Property boundaries provide the building location and ownership of adjacent land with a 300 feet of stopping. We need a lighting plan to make sure that section 22 dash 62 has met. Then, because this is in the downtown overlay district, there's additional requirements. One has to do with shared parking. To the extent feasible, parking areas must be shared with adjacent businesses. Architectural plans, please provide these as standards must be demonstrated to be met. Traffic impact statement is required. Bicycle racks are required. In the parking area, at least 5% of the interior area, the parking lot has to be devoted to landscaping. The building orientation is supposed to be parallel to the front lot line to preserve a consistent facade with line with the street. Primary entrances shall be oriented to the street. A patio to provide pedestrian friendly environment. New buildings should provide outdoor seating in areas where feasible. Screening of parking, parking lots that are about public rights away shall be screened with a low wall made of concrete, masonry, and other suitable material not exceeding the height of three feet. That concludes site plan, but then there's two special permits. The first one was for use. And my only comment there was the landscaping plan has to be designed by a licensed landscape architect. Other than that, the board can evaluate the responses that the applicant gave to section 22 dash 13 to see if they're satisfactory. Then there was a special permit required for the floodplain application. And here, I, in my memo, I said the application was incomplete because there's a whole section, it's Article 6, section 22 dash 34.7.3 that outlines all the criteria in floodplain, and I didn't get a response back yet as to how that section has been met. So I know Chris may have addressed some of it for his presentation, but I think a formal written response to that would be best. And that was, that concludes my comments.
Do you want to talk at least to the waivers?
Yep. So the first waiver was relative to landscape architect, just a generic one. The second waiver was relative to reducing the spacing effectively from a parking stall or maneuvering out to a column line.
And what's the reason for that?
So that's a multifaceted one. So as I stated earlier, we are in the floodplain, we are within riverfront areas, so there's a lot of, special level of environmental review that we have to do. And as part of that, what we did is we tried to optimize the parking that's located under the building to fit within column lines. And when you start applying widths of the parking stalls that fit between the columns, it becomes incredibly tight. But what we've done is we've reduced it to about a foot in certain areas, but in some areas we are being compliant, but it's just trying to get the stalls in between the column lines for access. There's no column lines because in the maneuvering aisles, it's just between the parking stalls if you go over the base.
So that's going to make it pretty hard for people to park.
And typically in these kinds of developments, it's not large vehicles, they're typically smaller ones. So we have the maneuvering aisle behind it, they can get in and out of the stall without interfering with the columns.
And all you need is one large vehicle, it doesn't necessarily everybody in that.
Yeah, why don't they take one guy with a truck?
And I don't think you can kill at least one resident not having a truck or some other.
I couldn't get in here tonight because I couldn't fit in the three spaces that were narrow up here because I have a pickup truck. I had to go around three times.
I understand you're limited, but that's a real concern.
People's homes to be able to park.
Can you point out what you're talking about? I'm going to call him.
So for example, we have one column line.
Okay, that's a column.
That's a column line there. We have one through here that's bounded by a curve. And we have an additional one right here. And then again, there's a few right here that are.
So those columns are 18 feet long? The length of the.
They're about 20 feet long, so you get about the 18 feet for the stall with a foot.
How wide are those?
Nine-foot stalls. So standard 21 stalls.
Both sides cut the number of parking spaces?
It affects six spots.
It would effectively reduce the amount of parking available on site. You can change the entire.
It would affect more than just six because.
It would affect more than six.
Parking.
Well, it would affect six because you got to go around that column on each side and the other two, basically.
And depending on the size of the car, you could end up in some spots unusable altogether, and that's going to affect maybe six.
And there's no street parking right there on Pleasant?
Yeah, I know there's probably not a resolution to it, but that's very problematic.
The trucks won't try and park there.
Well, they're people's houses, they're going to live there, what are they going to do?
Yeah. I could walk, Walgreens.
I'm sure they love that.
Free parking at the library.
Probably here now. That's why I think it's quite. Do they hope that I'm parking here? Those are all host.
So Boyle, these are multifamily. Zero. There's no setback requirement for the sideline up to 5 feet.
How about the other side?
Side view as well.
And that's residential on that side too?
Yes, we have a single family home that's located right here that extends effectively the equivalent length of the property. And then offside, there's also more single families.
So if you reduce the project by one unit with S alpha, because you'd be, we'll have fewer.
It wouldn't be, I can't give the answer right this second, but we'll reevaluate.
Yeah, one unit.
How many units you should reduce by to make parking work? It might be two.
Yeah, you'd have to reduce it by about four.
Yeah.
Well, they're not saying that they don't work, they're just tight.
You have a waiver for tightness too, you know? They got to work. You got a pickup truck, you're not going to fit.
And your neighbor's not going to fit.
And then you wipe out somebody else fitting.
You might fit, but then the next person.
Right. Yeah. Some people go in the line and they do fit. So could you at least look at how many units you'd have to deduct to make parking scheme work in appropriate fashion?
We can reevaluate that.
Yeah.
Was it 19 or 20? I thought you said 20, with 36 spots.
This plan says.
I apologize, 19.
19. 19?
It's not 20 units?
No, it's actually one over the, yeah, one over the amount.
I have one space extra, yes.
So if you took you two units out, that would get you four fewer, which would probably.
It's getting it to more of an offset calculation than anything else.
Yeah.
Let's see what that looks like.
Can you go back towards the river anymore, towards the brook anymore?
Uh, no.
And does it max right out?
We've effectively maxed it out. We have a bordering wetland line, which is this right of green area, if you will. So we have to stay outside of that area, obviously. And in addition to that, we also have riverfront. So part of the riverfront analysis that we have to do with common comments, we can't approach any closer than where you are because it is a pre-existing site. It's been that way for a while, but we can't approach any closer, and we have to offset any new areas with mitigation or such features. So it's a delicate balance of trying to meet all the environmental.
What's the existing?
So existing buildings not shown on this plan, but it's located right here.
It's shown here.
Oh, okay, so you have quite a bit further back.
Yeah, there's a, 68, yeah, 68 Pleasant is located approximately that long. This building would be set up.
Okay. Yeah.
Come in if you want. We're noisy?
Noisy, she's noisy.
Oh, it's open for the public.
It's an open meeting.
It's a planning board.
Planning board.
Oh, it's all right, we're too old for it.
That's good. Never too old.
Okay. I'll open up for the audience. Do I have anybody from the audience, any question? I'll ask one more time. Do I have anyone from the audience that has any questions or comments? Okay, third and final question. Board.
So I move to continue the hearings. Your own plan, if you want. When, Chris, do you want to come back?
I guess when is the next?
I just, I just thank you.
I'll give a thank you.
Does that give you time to go to conservation and do what you need to do?
So conservation, we have to wait until the final firm panel is issued. At that point, we then can submit. We've had conversations with Nick Crempy, conservation agent, so he's kind of aware of what's going on with our concerns, and we've had sit-down meetings with him. So he's aware of what's going on to the extent, you know, necessary.
What's available on August?
August 19th is available. Just be mindful that any additional material, you need Friday, the week before the meeting.
August 10th, I think.
Is that over?
At least at this point in time, yep.
10th. 9th.
August, I need everything by August 9th at noon.
And do we have any?
We don't have anything yet on 19th.
So I move to continue the site plan application for 6:30 on August 19th.
I have a motion made in second to continue the site plan until August 19th.
And we have to do them separately?
You got to do them all. You have to do them all separately. Do I have a motion made in second? Do I have any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote, wrong favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries.
Then I move to continue the open public hearing for special permit for use until 6:31 on August 19th.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion for the special permit for use for August 19th. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote, wrong favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
And I move to continue the open public hearing for special permit and a floodplain for 6:32 on August 19th.
Okay. I have a motion made in second for August, to continue special permit for floodplain on August 19th to 6:32. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote, wrong favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay. 6:45, open public meeting, the site plan for 198 and 204 Hamilton Street, Placels 2 and 4, a commercial parking lot.
Good evening.
Evening.
So just for the record, Justin McFlay with Hany Engineering here tonight on behalf of Bain Realty Trust. With me is also Tyler Cody and Scott Morrissey of Bain Realty as well. So the owners received a letter from the biller inspector back in May stating that the current use of the site with the truck trailers parked on it had to be approved by the planning board through site plan review, and they requested that we submit site plan review application and plan for you guys. So the plan from you tonight is that it's a parking plan that shows how the site's currently used. Right now, the. Right now, they have about twenty-five trucks that park on the site. So I've shown the plan to have twenty-five parking spaces that are shown here, ringed around. And then in addition, I'm showing three additional spaces that would service the existing. So this plan was submitted, it was reviewed by both plant department and the department heads. We provided a response letter back in June and we did receive one additional response letter from the planning department. I'd be happy to go through both letters, just the second one, which I believe most of the items have been addressed. There's a couple of open-ended items on the second letter, so whatever the board would prefer, I'd be happy to do.
Well, I'll go through the second one, then the cover's one.
Alright. So the second one was dated July ninth and the open items that remain on it pertain to. The dumpster access location and screening must comply, indicated location of dumpster on the plan. So we did show it on the plan, we just didn't denote the type of screening. Typically, it would be some sort of vinyl screening. Right now, it's a dumpster on wheels, so we would show it up against the building, we would screen it. If the board prefers something different other than your typical vinyl screening, we'd be happy to, but I want to leave that open to the board.
Yeah, vinyl screening is typically okay.
Okay. The second item is provide the use and ownership of adjacent land and location use of any building thereon. Within three hundred feet of the boundary of subject property. So the scope and scale of the survey on the plan is what we deem to be adequate. Uh, it's very consistent with what you guys have seen before from us, most recently, the project on Central Street. Next to the Jehovah's Witness, we showed the same information that we did there, so we thought that this would be sufficient for the planning board. I'm happy to request a waiver for it if it makes it easier for the planning board. Um, if we do zoom this plan out, we start losing the details of the site, trying to catch the three hundred feet each way down the street. The next open item is again, um, in response to the dumpster screening, vinyl. The comment eight is regarding pedestrian ways, so it's provide the location, dimension of pedestrian walkways, entrances and exits. So this site is currently a mix of pavement, broken pavement, re-arranged and gravel. But up near the existing building is all paved and it's paved flush to the door. So we're not proposing anything on site in general, we're just showing the parking spaces. But in regards to the pedestrian ways themselves. Like I said, everything's paved up right to the building, so if you put any sort of pedestrian way, a sidewalk or anything like that. It's gonna end up above the finished floor, which doesn't work, so that's why we didn't show anything there. We're not proposing any signage on the site. There are existing signs for the, uh, truck trailer parking, which are shown here. Each one of them is individually numbered. I did speak to Peter Niall over at the building department regarding what I was showing on the plan. And he said that it's sufficient to show the striping so that way you guys can have a picture of where the parking is. But he's not requiring the owner to strike it since it's gravel and he has the signs posted that show where each parking space will be. So the next, the next open item is regarding the stormwater runoff. So since we're not proposing any changes, we're not increasing impervious, we're not altering any grades. Again, we're just showing that the parking is sufficient. The stormwater analysis isn't required because we're not altering anything regarding stormwater. In the initial review, DPW did look at this plan, review our cover letter and had no comment pertaining to utility stormwater. So we believe, again, we still don't need stormwater analysis, but we'd be happy to investigate.
Yeah, we get you. This is sort of a catch-up project.
Yes.
Okay, if, if you had done this from day one and proposed this, there were certain things that we'd have required.
Yes.
And one of them is the stormwater analysis. It's observed by myself and other people who work being done, trucks and, and some oil and some, you know, evidence in that area.
Yes.
So I think we have to, that has to be mitigated some way.
So.
And I think we, you know, so I'll let you.
No, 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 we'll get to that part there. There's a whole other conversation we'll have tonight.
Right.
And that's part of the discussion. Um, again, at the time that we submitted this, it was just the trucks being parked there per stormwater handbook. And talking to DPW, because we are altering anything on site, we weren't required to do a stormwater analysis. And then the last open-ended comment is regarding sidewalks. Again, tied into pedestrian ways. Everything is paved to the building. You walk from the flat parking area into the building, so if you were to add any sidewalks, they would be above. The finished floor of the building, that's you'd have, you'd be blocking the road doors.
Okay.
And I just want to reiterate that as part of this project, it's just to show the parking that the trucks out of there. Can't park there, they do meet their zoning, parking size, adequate width, things of that nature. So we did receive a second letter, probably a little bit before lunch today. And it was dated seven nineteen regarding an onsite visit that had occurred on Friday.
Okay.
Um. Based on it, we were told you guys are trying to use the site as a contractor's yard. You have to potentially withdraw your application, send a special permit for a contractor. Or just like the state, but there's no intention with this plan for this to be a contractor's yard. I went out on site with Mr. Morrissey this afternoon to look at it, based on the letter. I had gotten the feeling that they, I'd say I thought, well, I thought there was a mess all over the site. I thought there was just more material everywhere. And when I went on the site and, um, I did take some photos, Mr. Morrissey has some photos as well. Some of the things highlighted in this letter regarding the building material, there was a couple pallets that were stacked off to the side as. They were looking for a new spot at their site to move, put that material. They were just trying to temporarily have it there so they can move some stuff and then move it back over to their shop. The other thing that was brought on in this letter was a two hundred and seventy-five gallon tote of what appeared to be oil. Myself and Mr. Morrissey looked at it, we physically got up on top of the tote and it was water. It was just a water drunk out of its mouth.
Oh, okay.
So when I saw oil, that was when I went, oh, no. But again, it was just a tote of water. Um, Mr. Cody and Mr. Morrissey this afternoon, they go out and remove the tote and the material that was on site. And they brought it, I believe, somewhere offsite now.
So it's, uh, it's on twelve Laney's Lane.
Okay, so it's back fourteen.
Laney's Lane, which is our building.
Yep, so it's been moved back to the shop. That was something that I did want to address tonight. See, we, we saw the letter, we went out on site, um, I didn't want to talk to the board about that, that, that was. It wasn't maliciously done and left there. There was no intention of that to be a contractor's yard regarding. The trucks being worked on, things of that nature, I've spoke to Mr. Morrissey about that and he has caught some of the guys doing that. They've been told, you can't do that here, that's not allowed to be here, so. They are actively aware of the situation to the best that they can do. They are trying to.
Let's put it this way. If he provided an area, it was a repair area, it was proper drainage and a drop, okay? With oil separated sludge.
Yep.
Okay? If he planned it that way, it could be done.
Yeah.
So, but you've got a plan to do that.
So it was never planned for them to work on their vehicles at the site. It was just meant for them to have a spot where they can park them and leave them, come and get them and do. Take them to go to make their deliveries, take them to get their maintenance done somewhere else. So this was solely just to provide somewhere for them to park so you don't have them on the side of the road. And a Walmart parking lot, something of that nature.
Like, for lack of another word, uh, would this be considered a modified, uh, truck stop?
No.
Truck stop usually has fuel and, and, and I know you don't have that.
No, and that, and that's why specifically in the letter, when Usnai went out and reviewed it, he did see that the trucks were there and he said. This is what fits under the commercial parking lot. So that we, that's why we filed this as a commercial parking lot. Again, there's no, there was no ill will in trying to sneak something by the board to be like, oh, they're gonna do this, so.
This thing has developed over thirty years, so it's been there for years. Okay, and we're sort of etching up a U.S.A.
Yeah.
And, uh, we've, so that's what we're trying to do.
Yep.
Uh, bring out someone into compliance.
Yeah.
And to try to beautify the area.
Yes.
So, so, so it looks better.
Yeah, and I know.
And I know that it's a nice piece of property, uh, I mean, there's been a hot dog stand at that time, so, uh. You know.
And it would be at some point, it would be nice to have a development there and at that time, it would be. Properly permitted, the right way, but at this time, for what they want to use it as, which is just again, a commercial parking lot. That's what we're here in front of you tonight for, so.
So who's gonna make sure that none of the violations that have been occurring are gonna occur once you get a permit for the parking lot?
So that's something I'd like the owners to speak to.
Cause if it keeps continuing and they're doing maintenance on vehicles there and, and, uh, your tenants. You know, not you, I mean, you're gonna have to, to, to watch the tenants, what they do, what they can do, can't do. Uh, that's a big thing. There's a lot of people complaining about that offline to a lot of us, we get calls all the time.
I can only imagine.
For the record, just say your name.
Scott Morrissey, one of the owners of the building. So very much take everything that's been said in the letters that we received one hundred percent to heart. We've acted on them always as soon as we know. And Mr. Niles contacted us and had a conversation with him in his office. We've got the Bacardi folks involved immediately. A subsequently gave us between Mr. Niles and himself, the proper way to go, a letter that occurred today, we acted immediately. So just give you a quick explanation, our parent company, Redline Wall Systems. Classic rookie mistake, I double ordered material for a job, didn't know it. Couldn't give you term, it was special order. So if you looked at the pictures, that was all steel studs there.
Yep.
Probably about eleven pallets. I had nowhere to put them, I'm stuck with them, I had to take them fast. It was an easy place to put them, but we get it, so we took them off, we put them on our other property. Not exactly as convenient, but it works, so we can work with that. The tank that was there, this was always behind a truck, we didn't really see it. We've got it moved, it's offsite now, we're gonna get rid of that, that, that'll be gone. Anything the board would like, we went to the point of Tyler here is now working with us full-time. He's no longer a police officer, but we've employed him. It's his job to watch these properties, which he polices now daily, to be able to make sure this stuff doesn't happen. I've had individuals, which I've got pitches of their trucks when they had oil being put in there. And I dismissed the people, right? You gotta go, you can't stay. It's why I came up with the number system, so that would have trucks back their driver's side mirror up to the number. That's their spot, and now I know if someone's gonna complain at spot twenty-four, spot twenty-three, I, we can address it immediately and get it fixed.
Tyler, what if you see these guys out there doing it in your drive-bys when they're inspecting the properties? Is it immediate, see you guys cause you've been told upfront? Do you have a, do you have any kind of paperwork or any type of rules or regulations you give them when they sign up to rent those spots?
Going into. Okay, Tyler Cody, um, working for Scott Bryant at Redline Wall Systems, in a management role for the properties.
Yep.
That he explained. So yes, just a short answer. The nature of the job that these mainly men have, um, these men have two weeks on the road and they're gone, and they're back for two weeks. So a lot of times if you see something, I'm addressing it instantly, because we drive back and forth Hamilton Street and it's like, what is that doing there?
Yep.
You can't have your plows here, I'm like on it. But I get a lot of response, hey, I'm in California, it's like. We're trying to be like, well, I don't want to pull your personal equipment out of there, but it, it's, they're all getting it, they're getting it now. It took a little bit of time and now, to be honest, it's really, I mean, I'm there every day, um, I notice the things that you're all pointing out, I get it. When something's there, it's, it's immediate and they're usually pretty quick about it. And now, like Scott said, we have a roster, we have phone numbers, we have points of contact, um, and they're all pretty responsive. And as far as the oil leaks, um, some of these guys don't have brand-new trucks. You know, I'd imagine that the profession, like every other profession, is, is hard to make it at this point, so we don't, we don't really get on them for that. Lately, I've been noticing it more, so I go, hey, you gotta fix it or you're gone, get a drip pan at least, something like that. And they're all, they're all working on it, they're all pretty compliant, and today I took a look around and seen any leaking trucks, so. If they show up, it is addressed right away and now it's, it's almost like it, no more, no more excuses, it's just, they'll be gone if, if there's leaky vehicles there. So that, that's the new plan.
When Justin and I looked at it, we found four spots that were the prevalent ones that would say be more than what you might see in your driveway.
Right.
You know what I mean? So we addressed those four. We will come up with any plan, I do like the suggestion that was made earlier about if we wanted to have a spot repaired. Just to give you folks a better idea, we never planned to have a lot like this.
Right.
During COVID, we got guys who stopped in and said, look, nothing's moving, we can't leave our trucks in town. We're, you know, we're getting calls, we can't leave them, can I leave my truck? We let one guy and he had a friend and he had a friend and he had a friend. All these guys are independent guys, very nice guys, they go to work every day and they needed a spot, so we've kind of looked at it as like, alright, well. We don't really have a full use for the property yet, for the interim, we can use it. We thought it helped everybody, helped the city, helped them, helped us. But, you know, we're more than happy to change what we're doing or modify it with anything that the board feels would be beneficial.
Thanks. I appreciate what you're doing and I, and I've seen it and I don't live too far from there, so. And, and it's, and I've had comments and comments from City Hall on, we're gonna trucking terminal here now? I never saw anything, I said, we just gotta make it look professional.
Yep.
Okay, some landscaping, some, some, maybe some fencing, some, you know, some things to, to, to pretty it up a little bit. But I agree with you, I've got a, a friend of mine, it's a long haul truck, I remember, you know, when he. He, he gets home, what, what do I do with my truck?
It's used.
And so I, I know, you know, he parked it on his lawn last winter and needed a tow truck to get it off because it sunk in the. Sunk on the front, yeah, so.
Just to reassure the board, if you, our previous properties, right, one fifty-five Hamilton, one sixty-two Hamilton, uh, one fifty-six Hamilton. Uh, the Whitcomb building, things of that, you see, we've always landscaped them well.
Yep.
We will do the same. Justin and I talked earlier this week about the new curb between the diner building and our lot to make it nice for the person there that's running that business.
Mm-hmm.
What, here do we put a fence, we put some trees, we're gonna make that nice, we'll make the other approaches nice. It, you know, kind of comes down to if it's okay to have them stay there, then we'll continue to go on with the beautification. And, you know, you know, whatever you folks would deem right.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of companies that take a big initiative, guys like you or places like yours. We've had a lot of problems from the city, a lot of new industrial properties that became stoppage for the auto auctions or the truck auctions as well. So we put some rules and regs together on that too, and it's, it's, I mean, it's not only beautifying the site, making sure things happen the way you want it to happen. It's also making sure that it's not a public mess. And it aesthetically pleasing and it looks good, depending on which stage you're at and what you're gonna do on each stage. And that's important, and I, I think a lot of the complaints that I get talked to about are just what it looks like and what's going on over there. It's always a mess, or what's this? Or what's this? What's that? And I'd just like to see it done right, that's all.
We would invite the members to drive by anytime and by any means, emails, whether it be Justin or us, whatever. I understand people drive by, but sometimes they see a multitude of trucks in those spots, and they think that in itself is a mess.
Right.
But we take a lot of pride. We don't have trash on our property. There's no overflowing dumpsters on our property. We don't, we don't like that.
Yeah.
So...
We're self-fenced every year, just little things.
The self-fence is fixed every year. We make sure it's up to grade. We call us at our farms every year, they're on it, you know. So we try to do everything to be good neighbors.
Yeah, and like I said, you have a lot of nice piece of property. So, you know, it sorta happened. It grew on its own. And now you say, "Okay, now I gotta modify it to make it a, maybe a real business." And as far as the contractor's side, where it's on the back, and with, I saw the pile of steel there, too. If that was fenced off and designated, that's okay. But it has to be, yeah, it would have to be fenced off and designated and allocated.
You're writing this down, right? Because he's got a lot of good ideas.
No, we wanna work with you guys, you know?
And we know that. That's why we don't have...
Okay.
We're never nervous about coming. We just know we gotta come and get your feedback.
Yeah, so I think that's where we wanna go, okay? Because you've asked for all kinds of waivers, and I don't think they're all necessary. I think the discussion here, when you've got, probably continue, you take another second look at what you wanna do and continue with where you're working. And I think we'd be all set, okay? Okay, because we have had comments and, and not only you, but a number of other, a lot of other locations in the city, that I'm not sure all these guys have come up, but they think, you know, all of a sudden they spot up and all of a sudden we find a lot that somebody, you know, was grass and there's a hundred cars on it, you know?
While we took the property, because we didn't like the car lot that was there before.
Right.
A little dilapidated building.
Well, that, yeah, that was surprising, it was still, yeah.
Well, you know, we get some sensitivity there, too. I mean, if you follow that river, you know, that river has come such a long way since we grew up. I mean, we used to know what color sunglasses and paint would be a mania patch. But it's a beautiful river when it gets further down. And we'd hate to see it start here, but that was the Clean Waters Act, right? In the seventies, it changed all that.
Yep.
And it did make a great comeback, but again, we've noticed a lot of people approaching on the banks of that river. We have vehicles, you know, no grease traps, nothing. I mean, these things are leaking right back into the river.
Well, we'll work with what we need to.
Yep.
Just another thing, I don't know if the board's aware of it. It looks like a huge piece of property, but because there's two major easements on it.
Right.
Justin has had to work hard to be able to, just be able to make it be useful.
Yep.
And this does suit that just because of the easements that are there. Triffs the property greatly if you're not careful.
Yeah, just for the board, really, the developable area is mainly the front. This is a sixty-foot utility easement that comes through. And typically with those easements, they know structures, nothing like that. Regarding the truck parking shown in it, that's usually okay with them. But for a potential full build-out at some point down the road, you're really only looking at the parcel here.
Yeah.
So it's, as much as it looks big, it gets small very fast.
If we're gonna continue this, do you wanna come back in August or do you need more time?
No, I think August would be fine. Just more for me. The board's biggest thing is the curb appeal up here.
Right.
And that's, just so I know when I go to do a redesign, we'll work with our in-house landscape architect to provide something. The only thing, just from the board's knowledge, is based on what the existing curbs that's on, I mean, not like to alter them too much. And regarding point things, we don't wanna do anything too large to restrict potential sight lines. Mainly coming down from...
Well, yeah, the trucks needed. I realize trucks.
Yeah, so I just don't want the board to have this idea of these big, beautiful trees and we come back with something and you go, "That's not what we want."
Yeah, no, I agree. I don't, yeah.
But I think to come back in August...
So August ninth will be the deadline for staff?
Yep.
And so then I'm to continue the hearing until six forty-five?
August nineteenth. Can we open the audience?
Okay.
The audience before we move.
Yep. Do I have any other comments from anyone in the audience?
Anybody wanna park trucks?
All right, then I reinstated my motion.
Anybody wanna park their truck there?
Anybody wanna?
And trucks, six forty-five.
Okay. So we have, I have a motion on the floor for August nineteenth at, what, six forty-five?
Six forty-five.
Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. No favor say aye?
Aye.
Or say no, motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all for your time. If anybody calls, tell them. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, no, I think I got it all. Minutes of previous meetings, May sixth.
Call order.
Oh, yeah, call order. Regular meeting, call order.
Pat Corolla.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Here.
Sal Chaconis.
Here.
Robert Ferroso.
Here.
Tom Kirkin. Jason Parry.
Here.
Dean Valier, excuse, John Siza.
Yeah. Call to, minutes, May sixth.
Make a motion to approve in second.
I have a motion made in second to approve the minutes of May sixth. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. No favor say aye?
Aye.
Or say no, motion carries. Two point two, May twentieth, minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve minutes.
I have a motion made, there are a second.
It's for you to say.
I have a second. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. No favor say aye?
Aye.
Or say no, motion carries. Plan submitted. Three point, A and R, for seventy-four Granite Street, map five, four, three, lot four. Okay, here on, gentlemen.
My name's Robert Smith. Being our survey, I did prepare this plan, Mr. Neal. And we're proposing to subdivide a piece of property, digit your parcels. Basic reason is to remove the residential portion from the business portion, and we're not doing anything but just doing that. In terms of the division, there are plenty of parking, existing parking for the both parcels. And it did not meet the lot width, but it is covered. We went to ZBA, they approved lot width reduction at a meeting that we attended and they voted.
Do you have the record on that?
It's in the packet.
Well, it's in the packet, it's okay.
And it's mentioned in the plan under the notation.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, it's not in the packet. It was in the...
It should have been.
I mentioned it in my memo.
Okay. You guys, what's good enough for me? That part, this is the old part.
From a stance perspective...
This is, this is the daddy's plot.
From a stance perspective, I requested that the property owner information be added for the properties across the street, in addition to the ones that are already there on the same side. And then the logist map is at one inch equals four hundred feet. It should be at one inch equals one thousand feet, but that's just per our regs. I don't know if it makes more sense to have it the way he has it.
Yeah, it probably does.
It makes it a little easier.
Yeah. I move to endorse.
Yeah, second.
With the editor or not?
With the ads.
Yeah, I have a motion made and seconded to endorse. Do I have any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. No favor say aye?
Aye.
Or say no, motion carries.
That was just the first edit, right? Not the second.
Yes.
So can you give me a revised plan, a Mylar and four plans with that matter information?
From across the street.
Across the street.
Is there one parcel across the street or are you...
You'll need to, whatever's in three hundred feet.
Whatever's across.
I believe there are two in parts.
If they're coupled, then both.
I can do that.
And you can still keep the scale the way it has it.
And the scale is okay.
Keep the scale the way it is, just add your...
So just if you could get it to me, did you get it? If you can get it by Wednesday?
I will try.
It's too easy, right? Thank you. No, so that's, yeah, so you're all set?
Okay, so...
Motion is made with the recommended changes. Okay, with the, whatever's...
For the...
On the other side of Granite Street.
Right, okay.
And when you drop off the new one, we'll give you this one back.
Right, and then you will go forward.
And I'll endorse it and I'll ready to release the decision.
Okay, and then I can pick it, you can inform me when I can pick it up. That's the idea.
Usually, if you drop it off, we'll let you know when.
Right, okay. No problem. I mean...
Well, it's kinda easy.
Okay, she'll take care of it.
If you bring it tomorrow, it'll be ready Wednesday.
Well, I'm sure I'll get it tomorrow because we have offsite.
You have other, you have other parties.
I have other parties, but I've got offsite printing to do.
It's okay.
So I will get it to you sometime before the end of the week.
We're pretty quick-moving, so you'll have it.
Oh, do you want a, do you want a new digital copy of that also?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I just...
Yep, you're taking it ahead. Yes, we do that.
Getting my gus in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I wanna tell you, these two are great in helping me.
Oh, thank you. We know that. They keep me straight.
It's nice to let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, three point two. A and R for five, six, five, Abbott Avenue. And one, one, two is Leland Avenue, map one, four, nine, lot one. One twenty-two, one twenty-four, one twenty-six, and one thirty-one.
Steve Fallon from Haley Ward. Property is on the corner of Abbott Ave. and Leland Ave. and also U2. It's made up of three parcels, one of the parcels being Naomi Ave. That was shown on a nineteen sixteen plan. The fee underneath that is actually owned by the owner, the Daddies. This is a God, a pen from the solicitor.
Yeah, it's in front of you when you came in.
Yep. Stating that she does not believe with the joint ordinance that were called by the street, but she also does not have the area to be included in the area calculation for the lots. So the lot, the whole area includes Naomi, and then underneath, we provided, we edited the plan to show the area exclusive of Naomi.
Here's the document from...
So the acreage that you have on this new plan here does not include Naomi Ave.
So lot one is... The acreage shown in the...
Yeah.
Here.
Okay.
So fifty-one thousand, four eighty-six.
That's...
That's without, that's without Naomi. And fifty-nine is with it. Okay.
The W thirty-seven minus six.
But you get that.
Very exclusive.
Yeah, from the county, they would, they would take and they can remove that street entirely. Yeah. They can vacate it. So that'll be, you're never gonna get a cut through to here.
This original parcel and this parcel have deeded their rights, any rights that they may have in this sole way?
So this, because it doesn't cut through.
Correct.
Well, it does, I guess, cuts through here, but it doesn't, does it cut through for you?
Is there a driveway there?
There's a driveway to the existing house.
But not back to here.
Correct.
Okay, so it's dead land anyway.
Well, it's, what's the frontage there?
It's a paper street.
The paper street that should be vacated by the county.
The city do?
No, the city, county's gonna do it.
And he owns it beyond, up of the street itself and on both sides.
Yeah.
So it's all the law one, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
This here is all the furniture for lot one. And this is lot two.
It would take the whole thing, yeah.
But these are deeded out.
So you can get to one. There's one, yeah.
It's all part of this three parcels. This one, this one, I'm sorry, this one.
So you want lot two?
Where's lot three? There's only, well, the existing parcel is made up of three parcels. This small, where one twelve is.
Okay.
The other one comes here. The way it's described, it actually includes, it goes by lots. It's one of those old nineteen sixteen plans. They're all twenty-four foot lots.
I figure they all are.
So it describes them by number.
So Kevin owns all of it?
Kevin owns. Kevin rents from that. But this will separate that parcel then.
Which end?
Kevin's all.
Just cleaning things up, okay.
All right, well, I move to endorse.
I have a motion made and seconded to endorse.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. No favor say aye?
Aye.
Or say no, motion carries. Three point three. A and R, seventy-one and two hundred, Atlantic Avenue. Eighty-one, ninety-one, and one oh one, industrial. And three North Street, map two, five, six, lots three, eight, three D, three C, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
It's a two page ad.
Okay.
So this is for submission of it, a lot along Moore Street and probably the gap, if you will. So a little background, the original parcel known as lot two C, if you will, has a pretty much over encompassing easement. It's a lot of actual pass and repass, utilities, all that kind of fun stuff. But in the, when the easement was originally created, it wasn't well-defined. And then over the years, it's been kind of pseudo-defined. And at the end of the day, it's very difficult to plot the easement and the rights to pass and repass and everything like that. So what this plan is physically doing is it's creating, what's known as parcel A, which runs along the existing way, driveway that accesses the property, just to exclusively set up the easement so that when somebody over in the Midwest, when they start doing title research, they know exactly, here's the access easement, utilities and all that stuff. So it's well-defined. It's not a buildable lot. It's just a parcel in order to designate the easement limits, if you will. In addition to that, we're also...
Is there a sidewalk on that? Or is that inside the sidewalk?
There's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk?
So in addition to that, we're looking to also reconfigure a couple of the existing lots. So originally, there were three lots, known as four, five, and six, that are running along industrial road, if you will. We're gonna consolidate those into two lots. Uh, we're looking to consolidate those into two lots, but frontage along industrial road. Uh, so, we're bringing that back in. That plan that created those original three lots came back before, was four back in, I would say, twenty seventeen. Uh, we're looking just to consolidate them to two lots instead of.
And those have.
That's on, that's on here.
It's on this, yes. So.
Four, eight, five, eight.
Five A.
Six used to be this area right here. So, we're just consolidating. Sorry.
Yep.
So, you're just going to add these two lots?
Just two lots.
And they have frontage on Atlantic or in.
They have, they have frontage on industrial, but they have access.
Atlantic. Okay. Yeah, yeah, this is a liberty.
So, this is that section.
Okay. And that's all wetlands, so they're not going to wetland.
What are you doing with five A, the part of industrial and part residential?
Absolutely. So, it's the intent to eventually develop these residentially. Uh, so, that's why we had to relocate lots five and six into ones and steal a little bit from lot four in order to get a buildable spot. Got it.
I think, I think when there's two zones, you can build on it on the lesser of the two zones. So, they couldn't really build this industrial on it.
Get to it. I just wanted to, you can't do residential, industrial, industrial.
Yeah. Um, I move to endorse.
Yeah. So, you're seconding. Okay. I have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? You're none, I'll call for the vote. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Motion carries. Three point four. Air and I for two hundred and two fourteen Thomas Street. Map three, six, nine, lot fifteen and fifteen A. Yeah, he's busy.
This one's a little less complicated than the last.
Okay.
It's two lots that were created in eighty-seven. Father and daughter. Lot one and lot two A and parcel A, which is a labor company. Fortunately. Kim's dad passed away. And over the years, being family, there were some things like the sheds that they weren't concerned about with the lot. So, right now, we forced themselves lot two. We created parcel A so that shed wouldn't be on her lot. And they can use a portion of the driveway that's like a turnaround. And a couple of easements because the existing driveway is shared. So, this will clean it up before they try to sell it.
The parcel A is going to.
It's a lot one.
It's a lot one.
It has the big house.
Right. And then this is the line for.
All the way down. There's a, also because you need. Sure.
Easement.
Right. Well, they, they share a line.
Yeah.
So, we had to split the line.
What is number two hundred? Is that fine?
That's a house.
That's a house, okay.
Whose house is that?
That was Kim Brady's five.
Father's house.
So, that was some house.
Right.
Trying to clean up.
So, it, so what, so what is, is this basically now two lot? I'm just.
It would be side again.
This.
They will be combined, yes.
Okay. All right. I, um, and the frontages.
And this driveway here is. That stays in ten.
No, that's good.
They don't need it.
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, so frontages one twenty? That's, and you have, um. All right, and then this one is. Oh, of course. Okay. I move to endorse.
Second. Motion made and seconded to endorse. Do I have any further discussion? You're none, I'll call for the vote. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. One more.
Yeah. Clarary plan subdivision. Bassett Street subdivision. Bassett Street map three, two, eight parcels thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-one, forty-four, forty-eight, fifty-six, and fifty-eight.
Scheduled for August nineteenth?
Yeah, it's a nine lot subdivision. With a private way, as they're saying.
Uh, why don't we push that to the first meeting in September?
Oh, that's fine.
September second is the first meeting in September. We have to advertise it.
September second is Labor Day?
Is September second Labor Day? Do you want to have a meeting?
So, sixteen would be the next.
The sixteenth of.
That's six thirty. Where's Bassett?
September sixteenth then.
Two, three, I mean, if we can.
Oh, right.
So, it's either September sixteenth or it's.
Up here.
August nineteenth.
August nineteenth. So, August nineteenth, that will, um, what's today? I don't think we have time to advertise.
You don't have time to advertise?
We do. We do? For August nineteenth.
Four weeks away.
It's four weeks.
Okay. All right.
All right, so six.
And we have something at six forty-five.
Yeah.
We have Ham, Ham, Hamilton.
Um.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. I have a motion for August nineteenth at seven o'clock. There was a second.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? You're none, I'll call for the vote. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Motion carries. Okay. Five point one. Site application sixty-eight, seventy-seven one Pleasure Street. Map fourteen, nineteen, three, and three A. Multi-family residential above floors office. It's been continued. Five point two, special permit use sixty-eight, seventy-seven two Pleasure Street. Map fourteen, parcels nineteen, three, and three A. Multi-family residential above floors office on first floor continues. Special permit floodplain for sixty-eight, seventy-seven two Pleasure Street. Map fourteen, parcels nineteen, three, and three A. Multi-family residential above floors office on first floor. And this has also been continued. And they're all continued to August nineteenth. Okay. Site plans for ninety-eight and two oh-four Hamilton Street. Map two thirty-six, parcels two and four, commercial parking lot. This has been continued. Okay. Okay, communications. One twenty-five Long Street, formerly two eighty National Street. Conditions approval not met. Planner board discussion director met. Sent a certified letter on six, seven, twenty-four requesting to meet with the property owners to go over outstanding conditions of approval with possible code enforcement or to commence if conditions are not met. Planner board to discuss and advise they would like to the director write a letter to the building commission to start enforcement. Okay.
And there's a cover letter dated June seventh in your packet that kind of outlines the history of my communications with the property owner. And I think we have the property owner here to sit on his behalf.
Okay. And one twenty-five, what was the issue?
Um, the landscaping was not completed for the site plan approval. There's about nine trees that need to be planted. And then the dumpster is not located for plan and it hasn't been screened. It's, it's in a different location and there's no screening on the dumpster.
Okay.
So, this dates back to July, a year ago, July thirty-first.
Okay, is Deona here? There you go.
Let me start. My son's going to take over this. He runs the whole operation. She, you called me, right? Last year?
A year ago, yeah.
And she said she's going to email me the site plans. So, I called Glenn Hines, who did the site work.
Right.
I said, I'm going to get it. So, I never got it.
I emailed them. I, I emailed them to you, but maybe you're.
Yeah, but we went to your office last week and you tried emailing and it never came through. She tried twice and it didn't through. And they've got it. But we're not, when you called up and said, we're not going to fight it, I just don't know what to do.
Yeah.
So, we're here now. My son's really, they're coming to discuss.
Actually, their property looks pretty good.
Yeah, he's the real boss. He fired me. So, he'll, if you pull up a plant with him, he'll discuss what's going to be done.
Right.
The big thing, I think, we're talking about, because the dumpster is not where the plans were, but you think about Gravel? The dumpster's on the right at Quonset Hot?
Yeah.
And for the trash out to come in, you know, it's right there. We could, it's paved. We can pave around it. I mean, not pave, fence around it. That's not a problem. It's a good location where it is.
Yeah.
You could take it, will you?
Uh, yeah, if you could.
So, what is your name?
Uh, Scott, that's here. Just for ease of trash removal and for my guys to load and unload, if we could fence that area where it is right now.
Yeah.
The other thing is we keep outlets behind it and that actually hides.
Screens.
Yeah, that, that eyesore. Uh, so, it's actually a little bit of benefit there as well. And then as far as the trees, we have no problem putting them in. We'd like to modify where they are though because we're plowing. Some of them make it very hard to, what's to remove.
Okay.
Well, I think you guys did a great job. Yeah. It was a great job.
Well, do they have to try to get a waiver at this point instead of nine trees?
They'd have to go back for a minor modification, assuming.
Yeah. So, but you said you had some problems with someone dying or something?
No, you never.
Have you ever planted them?
Well, no, no, what happened is, I don't know what happened to the plant. It says, Glenn Hines, you know?
Yeah.
I did the site work. Then I don't look at plants and I trust, I know, I've known for years. So, I figured everything was done. Then, you know, when we got the phone call, I said, okay, now I was going to fight it. And my brain had the lots in there. So, that's why.
Was it four trees?
How many trees?
I believe it says.
Nine.
Nine? Nine trees? Four trees?
It said, um. Where's the original?
You got, you got to set it, we didn't say it.
Um, I didn't bring it, some plans, no. It's nine trees. I printed it out for you.
Yeah, that's it.
You have it?
It says required six trees, uh.
Well, you don't want to plant trees now anyway.
You don't want to plant them anyway.
Yeah, it says, uh, total trees required six and then total trees provided eight on this plan.
Okay.
That's what it says.
Okay, whatever the plan says, it has to be.
Okay. So, required is six. Right?
Yeah, that's what says on here.
And you're all, and you're all.
I don't have to drive.
But you will offer eight?
Uh, they're going to be, um, a lot.
If you put extra, we're not going to plant.
Yeah.
But you don't have to put extra.
Oh, yeah. Um, they're up, they're up top. Yeah, they, um.
Well, you don't, you're not going to plant them right next to the driveway.
Plans, uh, yeah, we'll push them up.
Back of a snowmole. Yeah, we'll put snow there.
Okay. Uh, well, you want to plant them now, so you want to do September anyway.
Yeah. Right.
So, okay.
And then what about how they modify the location? They have to ask for a minor mod, to modify the location of the dumpster?
Let me see where it is out there. You've been by it yet.
I haven't looked at the dumpster. I know where, I know your property, but I haven't particularly looked at the dumpster.
I'm looking at the lot on the map. I don't, I don't see the dumpster. It's right to the right of the Quonset Hot right here. Which is fine.
Yeah, just screen through it all the way on the other side.
This is the garage. Right, and there's the, the Quonset Hot. The dumpster's right there.
Yeah.
The important part is that the dumpster is accessible twenty-four hours a day and that it's screened.
Yeah, we can screen it in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be.
Those are the, the parameters that you have to.
Okay.
Uh, meet those parameters.
Oh.
And plant the trees. We'll take and, uh. We'll have the, when you get it done.
Yeah, that's fine.
You're going to let it to the.
Okay.
As you write that.
For the tree?
Yeah.
Yeah. You always call to enter that.
And, uh, just let us know.
Okay.
And we, we'd be okay.
What's the deadline? September first, September fifteenth?
Well, I'd say September. You don't know whether it's going to do.
September fifteenth?
Yeah.
And if you can't meet it, you let us know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the dumpster issues. Pretty quick. Just screen the dumpster. And, and make sure it's.
Yeah. Yeah, on the, on the, yeah, on the plan that that's all required.
So, do we have two deadlines? One for the dumpster and one for the trees? Or do you want?
Well, we just do.
Yeah.
Oh, it's the same, right?
But, September 15th?
Yeah, keep it easy.
I could eat time, or something.
Thank you. Thanks.
Can I do it?
I like how you spread all up on your son, I like how you plant him for everything.
Good man.
Give him a raise.
Okay, 6.2, Oriole State subdivisions. Commonwealth Circle, certified by the set of 7324 directive to provide updates.
Yeah. So, there's history to this, the board's aware of, um, you, you lived through this one. Where there was complaint about dumping on the open space parcel. The board ultimately decided to designate the enforcement of that to the conservation agent, and he's handling that. But in the meantime, it's come to the attention of the board that there's outstanding funds that are being held, almost $14,000. Just a little shy, $14,000 being held as a performance guarantee, and the street's not finished. So, we don't wanna hold, we don't wanna keep this money locked up in perpetuity. We wanna release it and do some improvements to the street.
What are you gonna do for $14,000?
I don't know. The, um-
Except for the mayor?
The estimate, uh, cost estimate of, to complete the remaining work is, like, $29,500. And that doesn't include everything, it doesn't include legal fees. We didn't get a full estimate, we got a partial estimate. So, the amount we're holding is not enough to cover-
No, it, it, you look, like-
Commonwealth Circle.
Commonwealth.
Yeah, the amount we're holding is not enough to cover the amount of the improvements that are required. But it's up to the mayor to, if once the board declares this a default, if that's what the board chooses to do, it's up to the mayor to, um, use the funds as CCSP. As we learned with Summit Con.
Right.
And we've received no response from the-
We did not, I sent the certified letter, it came back with a signature. But we did not get any phone calls, or emails, or walk-ins. And I don't, I don't see Mr. Horne there.
Okay.
So the board can declare default.
Uh, motion made in second, holding default. And to stop proceedings to, uh, transfer the money out of the treasury, uh, to the general conference, to the general- Plan, I guess. Okay, any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Housing Committee, recommendations for zoning amendments, upper story dwelling units. Planning Board review, proposed zoning amendments, and to make recommendations whether or not to petition City Council.
All right, we're, um, fortunate enough to have a guest here tonight, Mr. Joseph Boyle from the MRPC. He worked with the Housing Committee to draft these two recommendations. And, um, I'll, if the board wishes, we can-
Can we open the second one, too?
Yes.
Well, they're not even, it's communication, so, yeah.
Right, this is just me, um-
Yeah, no, okay, all right. I'll open up the second one. I think we, it's, I mean, that's what I'm doing. Go ahead.
Okay, um-
Say your name for the record, even though I interrupted you.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I am Joseph Boyle, I am a principal planner at Monitius of Regional Planning Commission. I have been working with the Housing Committee, um, since last fall. Initially on their MBTA Communities Act project, but also on a second project. And the Housing Committee, uh, received a grant, um, District Tactical Local Assistance Grant, to, um, hire us to review the, uh, Leominster zoning code for ways in which it could promote housing. I, um, did, uh, produced, I, I did an initial review, I produced a memo for, for the committee, with a number of recommendations. And, uh, the committee, this recommendation, where, uh, when they came, when the next time we got together, was that they wanted to move, to pick a couple of the lowest hanging fruits, so to speak. The best ideas, the, that were the easiest ones to get through, that would, uh, so, to, uh, help to build some momentum and, um, make some, uh, make some positive changes, which would lay groundwork for additional changes. Two that they especially liked were, uh, proposal to create a new land use. Uh, the upper story dwelling units, distinct from single, two-family, and multifamily, um, apartments. So that it could be, uh, treated differently in the zoning compared to, just that upper story dwelling units above our retail use could be treated differently in the zoning than other, um, than multifamily in zones where that would be appropriate. And, uh, this one was also, this recommendation is also related to the MBTA Communities Project. The MBTA Communities Act project, in that the map that we have been working on is including, um, what we call a mixed-use overlay district. It is like the multifamily overlay district, which is required for an MBTA zoning, except that it requires commercial on the first floor. The intention here is for communities that wanted to put their MBTA district over their main street, they didn't want their main street business sector to be wiped out by, replaced by entirely residential development. And so, this allows, uh, this allows regulations that the first floor has to be a non-residential use. But then, uh, up above, they are, they have the allowed-by right multifamily residential as the rest of the MBTA Communities Acts. The way that that act is written, um, in order to allow that, the, the way that, uh, the proposed zoning amendment that we're working on is, is written in order to allow that in a mixed-use zone, is that upper story residential, this use on here, is allowed by right. And the other uses, single and two, and multifamily, are not allowed in the zone. So that to build the multifamily residential, they have to build it on upper stories. You don't currently have, Leominster doesn't currently have upper story residential as a distinct use, and so-
Yeah, we do have it.
Yeah, you have upper story residential, you treat it as multifamily residential, that's just not upper stories.
Yeah.
This, what, what this does for you is, it allows you to have districts where upper story residential is allowed, but not multifamily by itself. So that, that situation of the main streets, you don't have, you know, a commercial storefront, and you lose your economic development value because it gets replaced. This, you can allow the upper story residential without, uh, and still protect your, uh, your, your first floor residential. The other proposal, the, uh, was based on my analysis, was to get rid of the per dwelling unit, um, lot size requirement in the RB and RC district, and switch to a fixed lot size. Leominster has very robust setback, site plan review, and parking requirements. Which, you know, address the issues that extra lot sizes per additional units, um, are put into zoning codes for. Because it has that level of protection, you state how many parking spaces you need, you say how, how, what, what the setbacks are going to be. And because so much is being covered under site plan review. This, this extra lot area per dwelling unit, um, requirements in the RB and RC districts is not really providing any better protection for the public, for the neighborhood, and for the public purposes. It is just making, uh, the construction of housing, is just restructuring the construction of housing. And what's more, specifically in the RB district, the, between the, um, the very large lot sizes, um, for, um, large, for multifamily, and the lot size requirement for the multiple additional units, plus the very large frontages. It would, it, should there be an applicant who has a large piece of property in this zone, you're, in the RB zone, your zoning is actually steering them towards big multifamily campus-style developments, as opposed to smaller, uh, individual lot. You know, with two, three, four family, uh, type of, type of projects. And so, in order to both make the provision of, uh, additional housing easier and, um, promote a more neighborhood-appropriate scale of development, I'm recommending eliminating the lot size, the additional square feet per dwelling unit. And just let your parking requirements and your setback requirements, uh, as the buildings get bigger, take care of how much land it's going to need. As well as reducing your lot frontages. If you wanted to go, uh, over, uh, exactly what, what the change, what the changes between, uh, being proposed are, I can, I can walk through that, but that's, that's the thought process that brought us to where we are. We are hoping that the Planning Board, um, will support and sponsor these zoning amendments to the City Council. And, um, we're bringing the, and, um, we are bringing this one, the one about the upper story dwelling units up. We are about to submit to the Commonwealth for, uh, pre-application approval of the MBTA Communities District. And, uh, that depends upon the, and in that, the MBTA Communities District, uh, is written with the upper story dwelling units use, uh, in it already.
Oh, it's already in it?
It's in our proposed zoning amendment.
Right.
But it's not-
But it's not in the MBTA?
It's, uh, it's not in the state law?
I don't know, yeah, I'm asking.
The state, the state law is, uh, no, doesn't use the term upper story dwelling units. They talk about requiring first floor residential. This is the, this is the route that, uh, we were going in to implement that, that, that policy of having a district where, um, residential is allowed on the first floor, it has to be a non-residential use. The way that, uh, we're implementing that, because it dovetailed with this process as well, is to allow upper story dwellings in that district.
So, so, we're gonna see, we have to see the PT election.
It's in your packet.
It's in the packet.
You got the packet.
Yeah, you have, we have the-
So what, what is the action you're looking for?
We're looking for, um, planning board to petition City Council-
For zoning?
For a zoning amendment.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And, and when this happens, keep in mind that the, the City Council's gonna refer back to the Planning Board, we're gonna have a hearing. It's gonna, you're gonna have further review of this.
I move to petition City Council and start the process.
For which one? For 6.3 or 6.1? You have to do, take a minute to-
All right, 6.3.
You're gonna take an individual, yeah.
Second. Or do we start the process?
Um, while we're here tonight, if we wanted to-
Well, we're gonna take a moment.
Okay, so I, so I have a motion on the, the first in the Housing Committee zoning amendment, upper story dwelling units, okay? Recommended to the City Council. So I have a motion by Paul, do I have a second on that?
Second.
I have a second, I repeat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. The second one is a-
Same motion.
It's a dimensional requirement for residents to be in residency district. Planning Board to review, propose zoning amendment, and to make recommendations, or not, to the City Council. Yeah, like you said, it's gonna go to City Council, and they come back, and we're gonna have a hearing, anyway.
All right, let's vote on that one. Motion, second.
Okay, Paul, motion, do I get a second over you?
Second.
Jason? Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries.
I'm, I'm sorry. Now that the vote is done, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask the board, uh, did you want to go over, you know, the details of what's this, of what's, uh, being proposed tonight, um, in a little detail, um, in order to suggest recommendations for a final version that gets submitted?
Yeah.
So I'm, so if we talked, well, we just voted on the upper story dwelling, but you're just, so you're recommending, special permit for residency with by right, A, in business A, business B. Special permit in mixed use two. And by right, what's B?
Village.
Residence.
Village?
B?
Village, village.
And then, five or more units.
Five or more units of-
It's, it's none of them are by right, and there's not, and the difference is nothing in, in residency.
Right.
Which makes sense. To, to, to explain that, residency, residency doesn't currently allow retail uses.
Right.
My thinking on that was, there are some existing, pre-existing non-conforming retail uses in, in your older neighborhoods. Especially the corner stores.
Corner store, yeah.
Okay? Corner stores are a positive thing in, in, especially in lockable neighborhoods. It's a good thing, it improves the neighborhood. And, uh, actually, the initial version of this, um, was considering, uh, um, and you might be seeing this again, a proposal to allow some retail in, in the RC. But, like I said, the purpose of this was the lowest possible. So, they just, so the, um, the Housing Committee decided not to get into that. But with the existence of some of these pre-existing non-conforming uses, where there's already a corner store, if they wanted to put units above it, it would be by special permit. However, going over five, more than five units above a corner store, that would officially be pushing. The BA and PB, um, are not by right, I believe that's following the, um, existing rules for housing in BA and PB.
Right.
The MU1 and the MU2, I, what, that is a little bit tricky, and if any, uh, if the board has any advice on how to handle this one, uh, I'd certainly took, take it. We have to, we have to talk about this a bit in the committee. The MU1 and the MU2 are a little bit tricky, and I think what I did here was to just follow the, um, rules for multifamily housing.
Those are mixed use, anyway, so.
Yes, those, yes, those, those are mixed use, anyway. It did not look to me, especially the MU1, that the mix was really intended to, for, for housing. That it was really more of a different mixed, commercial, industrial.
It was more, yeah, commercial, industrial than, than housing.
Where the MU2, I believe there's already a MU2 that has housing. Yes, and, uh, so, so that, that seemed to make even more sense to me. Do these use categories here, do these seem to be the right ones? Or let's, let me ask it this way, is there any that you look at these and say, "No way, that's crazy"? Is there anything that's obviously wrong here?
No, I don't think so.
I don't see anything.
This is the next one.
You?
Yeah. He grabbed it.
He grabbed it, it's definitely wrong.
Hey, look, I'm the expert on the planning of zoning here, you're the expert on, that hurts on Leominster. And you can't plan, there's no such thing as planning in theory for the theoretical towns, only planning for real communities. And what's the right answer in one is in the right, in the other.
Well, how does this compare to other cities and towns? They don't have anything like this, so they do, uh-
This, um, this is a little unusual, having upper story dwelling as a, as a separate use. Um, you do see it in most places, in, here and there, but it's-
Well, Kleon is a perfect example of-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, I'm not even there. I was talking about zoning ordinances.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
In practice, on the street, yes, you see residents above storefronts all the time. Usually, that's handled by, that's treated as if it was a multifamily residential use and a retail use. Or, it's treated as a mixed-use building, and that's, um, described as a, uh, as a use of a mixed-use building. And this is, this is option three. Upper story residential is a, is a use, just like two-family and single-family. Um, I'm also adding it to the overlay district table of uses, you have two, two different tables of uses. And then, um, and, and then when the MBTA community, the MBTA Communities Act, I mean, it will add two more columns to these, to the overlay district table of uses, where the two overlay districts proposed to be created in that. And it adds use categories for these, uh, for these upper story dwellings, allowing them by right. So, okay. Well, we voted on it, and I think we like, I think we're satisfied with that.
Yeah.
I just, no, if the City Council isn't, they'll, they'll-
They're the ones-
They'll amend it.
Yeah, and they'll send it back to us.
Yep.
And we'll see you then.
Now, this is the second one, I just wanted to make sure, 'cause it's not immediately apparent by looking at it, what's going on here. So, uh, just to walk you through all, through the changes. First of all, the minimum lot area, um, column. Okay, that changes to a standard 10,000 square foot, um, minimum lot area. We're getting rid of these per unit for multifamily, per unit, and, and, um, and we're providing the same lot size for a single and two-family home. That's, that's the changes that made, that were made there. I kept that row about conversion of single or two-family residents, 'cause I didn't see any particular reason it needed to come up. In previous lot coverage, uh, I kept the conversion column the same, and then I settled on the standard 50%, on the standard of 50%. Lot frontage, I'm eliminating the, proposing to eliminate the 100 and 120-foot lot frontages for multifamily projects, that's what I was talking about, that's gonna, if, if somebody has a big piece of land, that's gonna steer them towards a big campus-style project. Whereas if he can do 50-foot frontages, maybe they'll do 50-foot frontages. And the rest, uh, just stays the same. And then, down the bottom in the RC, it's basically the same thing in the minimum lot area. I get rid of the per unit requirement, just set the standard lot area.
Right.
And, did, did any-
But the per unit, like a duplicate, uh, control? Or is it, I'm trying to figure why we had to, we've had the per unit for a long time.
Yes, yeah, the, the, the thinking behind the per unit is pretty obvious. If you have four units on a lot, you're gonna need more space for the parking, and to meet your setback, you're gonna need a bigger lot to be able to meet your setback requirements, 'cause it'll be a- you're gonna need a bigger lot to be able to meet your setback requirements, because the building, you know, it's the most sensible thing in the world. But the thing is, having your setbacks, and having a parking requirement, will by itself make them have larger lots for bigger buildings, and, but if they can, but if they can meet all of your, all of those parking and setback requirements, and get through a site plan review process because they've got a nice design on 10,000 square feet, it isn't actually doing anything to benefit the public, to arbitrarily say, no, there needs to be another 4,000, 3,000 square feet on that lot. That's not actually getting you anything, all it's doing is squeezing housing production. So, thank you very much for your support.
Sure, so we just have to vote on this one?
Yeah, we did.
And there was a vote. Okay, great, thank you for giving me these, as I walked up to the line.
Okay.
I, I very much appreciate this, and I expect I will be seeing you for more of these as this process goes on. One, just to give you a preview, something that is likely to be coming for you next is a proposal about your C district, your commercial district. There was discussion in the Housing Committee about allowing housing in the C district, and instead, the direction that I'm recommending is some of your C districts, the ones that it would be appropriate to put housing in, should be rezoned to VB or VA. So, I expect to see that, some of those changes. Some of your commercial, you need to protect from residential improvements, so that it can be its full potential for economic development, but others, mixed use is better. And there are very different types of places that are all zoned with the same C on the map. That would be better off in different zoning, so I look forward to seeing you. Thank you so much, thanks for everything.
Okay, 7.0, Director's Report.
You got 6.5.
I'm trying to get it. Monetary Report, Representative, point of Dean Vallier, with the second reading. And Montezo Joint Testation. We're not the one on that either. Testation Committee Representative, appointing Lucas Wood to represent, that's the second reading. No action taken. Director's Report, okay, Director's Report, 7.1.
Okay, I have a lot of things, but I'm gonna move quickly. John, Susan, and I attended the MHP Housing Conference in Worcester. We learned some good things. There was one about a big housing bill coming through with a lot of money for housing from the state, including a mandate that accessory dwelling units be allowed by right, and not with a special permit. So, I have to, I shouldn't, I don't, I didn't, I have to check up on the status of that bill, because it may have moved since I last checked.
Yeah.
But I'll get back to the board about that when that housing bill comes through. Housing Committee update, you just saw, heard from Joseph Boyle on that. We have meeting on Thursday, and I have a developer coming who wants to present how they're gonna be able to provide, this is, they're claiming they can provide housing units, single-family housing units between 350 and 450,000 per unit. And so, we're gonna entertain them and see what they have to say, and that's gonna come forward Thursday. Because we, moving on to 7.1.3. Because we only had one meeting per month, there was an A and R that was gonna have more than 21 days before the July 22nd meeting, so I endorsed it. It was 1343 Central Street, had the required frontage, it was pretty straightforward. The subdivision regulations, 7.1.4, have been updated with all the required amendments that are made. We have electronic copies of that, and I emailed them out to the board. We're gonna make, we have in the budget to make paper copies, but not till the fall, when the printer press opens, because we do it with the high school, so we'll have those printed. Then, there, I sent email out about a Route 2 study, Mass DIT study for public comment. If you wanted to comment on that, you have, and you haven't already, you have till the 25th to do so.
Very ambitious.
Yeah.
A fraction of the things that are.
And that was all I have.
All right. All right, yeah, great.
Well, Executive Assistant, he's gotta go.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.